Okay, we're going to start the meeting. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting via Zoom and iTunes. So, details regarding how to access the meeting are available on the district website at Elkhorn Rapids dot eight twelve dot M N dot U S. For member Greg Larson will be attending the meeting via Zoom from the baseball field. We'll hear you through thirty minutes after that meeting. We'll call the meeting in order.
Should we?
The ones in attendance.
It's not important to speak.
And let's stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
The Republic, the West, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
Justice for all.
Everybody, first item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. Do you have anything on the agenda? Yeah, without change. It's my end, Brenda. Please do the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? There is no discussion. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying a aye. We'll do a roll call, Greg.
Aye.
And Molly, Brenda, and I'm an aye. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Good, we don't have any emails? Okay. We'll move on to acknowledgements. Viking Elementary and Elkhorn Rapids High School office staff, thanks for the communication and for answering any questions here during the pandemic. And our coaches and advisors, thanks for your effort, especially during the pandemic. Wrapping up the school year. Let's really go a little deeper, so that it went as smooth as possible. We'll move on. Administrator reports, finance director. I think it's.
So, first thing that our colleagues already moved in our schedule. I think I was thinking about you guys have approved today. I'll go over a quick commentary to report the different items that are relevant to this particular. First thing is, Treasury Report, what I mean to you of the very good balance all around. So, it may be very important for us to just make a quick comment on the community of three eleven. It's a high risk of this quarter year. Again, very good. We started our, we started our month with twenty seven million dollars investment account. And we finished the month with four point one. Day mark for us in terms of the amount of revenue that we see, month of days offered to we see, the second year of revenue, which we receive. We get a number last fall, we asked to be prepared, let us, two hundred thousand dollars to go into the.
My God!
Hey, Lord, I'm just preparing with the litigation to draw our checking account to one point six million dollars. So, what does that mean for us is, at the end of this month, we have four point one in our investment, one point six in our checking account. Essentially, we have close to five point seven, five point five dollars. Why is that important? I'll tell you why that is important. At fourth thirty nine, we received an email from the Commissioner telling us, legislation at the moment has not received any consensus regarding what they want to do for the next five years. So, they're saying it without saying it, prepare for a shutdown. Okay? What that means is that all state agencies are in a situation, each of them, a budget agreement. School funds, first, and this negative funding, there is very consensus. For us, we're gonna be, we're gonna be okay. We have four bonds of operating bonds, another third, that we can take in, so that we can labor, yet there has been, which can. So, even though the government shutdown, well, the thing that you might, because they're the opposite, we'll be okay. Okay, so if we hear, or using our organs that we belong to, government shutdown, government shutdown. That needs to be done.
A lot of money is on your account.
So, that's, that's what we have in the end, that memo, it has, has the likelihood of knowing. Second thing that I'll go through in my Treasury's report is, this is the most definite thing to have before setting you, just to work through it. That's really good.
Well, this law, law, they say the person who go in there. I just put it right.
I will.
They don't get that, you see.
We have enough collateral in our, in our new account, so there is no risk that we lose money if we fail. One thing that I, one of the risks to the board is that.
Oh, he is very well.
I am evaluating my relationship. We are, we are supposed to give bids from banks to the, every one of the few years to take the bank to Minnesota National, but I did request bids from our local banks, and then I wrote the request for the federal bank that we're paying for, where we gained that asset, to give them less than two dollars a year. So, that brings our, we're going to have two banks, for which I immediately had a thing that the whole of the management evaluation for that, to keep them provide us better results, value turns, and that other information. You don't have to pay the bank until what you're running for. We've got plenty of time to evaluate. The rest of the banks is, we're just kind of closing out the year, so you're gonna see a lot of journal entries probably, to make sure that I balance everything, our goals, what Minnesota's catching best, make sure that we're complying to our efforts for the next couple of Treasury reports, and use a ten to be long in the entry, but again, just do not forget everything. And like always, at the end, it's all payables. So, if you have any questions on payables, you just look at the report, and then we'll be able to give you more information on that. Questions regarding the Treasury's report, or the memo that we received a little bit ago, and I'm telling you guys that we can be okay, we can do it in a minute. But that's the Treasury's report. Also, some different items, you guys are gonna see, your people are too many due, if you ask me, I'll be able to give it up and prove, essentially, the way we're going to highlight, that in our contracts, we requested, we negotiated, a change of condition, unfortunately, we didn't know that there was to be one for what qualifies. If you belong to an insurance plan, there's a limit for the first plans qualified in the first aid account, and we are under that limit, so they're asking you to consider our contract, request that we do, that we do, use a particular benefit, whether it involve probably the benefit going to the first aid account, but it's meant to go to tax, tax exempt. Your goal is our license, and that's the, the, the. We will listen to you guys. Number. Second thing that we'll go over, and ask you guys to pick again, is our insurance. At the end of the year, we have to be evaluating insurance. We are in a really good trend, and constant insurance, so we receive bids from uninsured people, see. We've been with five years now with A and E to the location of our falls. They provide us probably insurance, we call them like A and E, we see. Today, with the losses submitted up there, the other, the other two companies that really bid is Miss. Miss is pretty much a property insurance block, like many, many schools, most block throughout the state, and then in the metro area, basically, as well, and also, Bell Bank, certainly, we get. After all the analysis, to make sure that, one, we have plenty of coverage for schools in the event of disaster, make sure that we're protected by cyber, or com. We have some insurance, but the location actually has better prices. That is one definitely to be deal with. Great service, great agents, again, our premiums are coming down, but it's in savings. Last year, we paid a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in our heating policies. This year, we'll be taking the thirty one percent, based on the progress of these. One of the things that really hurt us a couple of years ago was the work comp. We had substantial things that brought our, we're going to modify rating, we go through, and essentially, the way work comp happens is where somebody gets injured during work, and they go to the doctor, and forty workers, this possibly, for that particular medical bill. Obviously, that impacts you, the amount of time that they're probably work, work on this, in there. So, this year, with our health, first of all, that maybe we're gonna be given many options on how to service the employee that gets hurt, to get them medical treatment, but then how we get them back to work, this is probably, with that, our premiums, we can get, we can save a lot of good things, things that initially, we could, there are a lot of things, make sure I talk to, probably more proactive, rather than being active, or bad. Last year, we look back at our, our plans, we were pretty small compared to any other year, and makes it worth it to be significantly increased in our contracts. It's time to take the work, last year. But that's my recommendation, when we get to, to give, to give to these ones. Other things that we'll talk about today as well is to rescind the resolution that was passed to value the payment bond for the development of the parking lot. And the reason why we're asking that is because we approved the resolution, and the volumes that we have, we're gonna push the project next year. One thing is, one, to retain the longstanding resolution is, in the month of July, we are gonna ask the board to pass a new resolution to reimburse that fiscal. So, the next bullet point, we're gonna, you know, we, we're gonna, that's what we're working regarding testing off the soil, to the, to the next engineer, and essentially, a resolution that we're passing July, will cover us sixty days proactively, proactively, by appealing here any cost. Once we pass the bond later, in the upcoming year, whether it's January or February, we can pay back the general fund. So, it's just a couple of things that I suppose, I'm doing any cost. However, we do want this solar bearing, as done as soon as possible, so we can get better bids, better cost projection, we don't exactly what we want for. So, going into that, we did receive two bids for the testing of the soil. Bob Schliemann, the engineer, the engineer that we helped us to apex, received two quotes, one from Brown Peter Tech, in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, and the second bid to Pericon, in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Bob Schliemann is recommending that we honor Lois' bid to Pericon, who will be able to complete his work starting from August twenty fourth. If we hadn't met you, that this was a good way to go about. So, we get to that, these hundred, Lois' bid, that I can, we find by three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Then we're gonna go into business item, which we see that talks about the new thing that application plan. So, one of those problems that we had this fall is getting that, that lunch application back. And really, what through a wrench in the process is, the process I gave, we granted three notes to all students, so households, literally, were discussing amongst themselves, who they're going to need to search for lunch application. However, the lunch application is still critical, and we, and we certified students who, they classified as, we reduce lunch statuses, because it brings significant amount of A to the school this. How much A? If you qualify one student as free, it will bring an additional four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars on top of the salary that we've already received. If you qualify one student, we reduce lunch status, we bring an additional one thousand, seventy-four dollars. So, to give you guys a perspective, this intensive for the revenue, this particular fiscal year, we are equipped to receive somewhere in the ballpark of this, four million dollars. That's a ton of profit. So, in the fall, we ran into the, the issue that many of the issues we're dealing from here, so, in December, when we started to run in a few projections, we wouldn't leave it all after that, right? It's the left leg in our offices. I think this, I think that we were literally put a task force, try to get those applications. We don't believe this, eight hundred thousand, twenty thousand, we'll get applications, we will find families that we can, that we can. So, what we are proposing is, you guys, because we're all okay, that we need to put an incentive plan to get this application. So, today, what we do is, we have a checklist that, as students enroll, we go over that checklist, that they were, that their advice, and we said, oh, wonderful, you know, we need this, this, and this, and then that application is part of that. However, we want to reward good behavior, and to help families and students that if you turn that lunch application in, we're gonna give the students a free activity pass for the year. Right? Hopefully, that gives parents that, that necessity, that even though they might contribute three months next year to the USDA, we still need that application back. So, with that, we're saying, board, please consider our recognition that we're going to give out free activity passes, to, so we can compensate those students and families that are active, we see when we can have the activity pass, we can have these four students. Every cent of those dollars, we do not make money in commissions. You know, we charge, I believe it's like two or five dollars per student, we would make that if you qualify. Big trade off. We can kind of give you guys another example. Naga, the district that's to the east of us, they give families a higher mark of premiums to claim application, because the return is much higher. We're not gonna go out into spring, and again, for asking you guys to support us, and encourage families, you know, to buy this. They're capable of our desperate, capable to work for the funding that we get, and one of the things that is right now, I do block that application, because the funding, running a lot, for the council board, asking you to not be over eighteen years. I go to every single representative that's in this area, all to them, and they express my experience, and that is one of the things that I feel I need to express. Then, next thing, budget proposal. I wanted to spend a little bit of time here regarding the narrative, just to give you guys some claims of it. First page, has about who are doing official bond, providing the board education. My apologies, if I can spell somebody's name, we will, and we just corrected it right away. After that, we look at our, our staff, we, we're term inclusionism, see. The first, the second pitch I talked about, what are you doing? This is the strategic plan that we passed out in the video, and we, we, we let, we let know, then we create the budget based on this particular plan. Again, our budget, this is make sure that we get this image with, stage, our budget, and this budget. Well, when we came to that budget, and we translated it into a narrative, budget overview, can we talk about that? The budget that we're proposing today is the projection based on many factors. Those factors that we project into it, which is the funding moment, moment has been now stabilized over the last five years, but we're assuming, uh, weighted average growth. So, if we look back at twenty eighteen, we have four students, four weighted A V S, three hundred and sixty, twenty zero four. We are projecting to receive, to have students enrolled, eight hundred and thirty seven thirty two. You can see throughout the years, for example, in twenty nineteen, it increased by about twelve, and then it decreased again by about ten or twelve, and then it increased again, and it increased again, that weighted average, that twenty twenty two. We are, again, in that stabilized period, we are working on the marketing campaign, and, I don't know, we're, we're, we, we'll be attracting. Once we take a look at our student average projection, then, again, there is somebody who is important, this depends, and the problem is that we receive A A, based on the number of students that we have, this, students, the more A, it's very critical, that we always try to get, as we get projections of students, is that trying to be, to be a lot of these that we're looking for. After we take a look at that, or look in terms of funding, you're gonna see that, for the first time in my career, I put this particular note here, which has a, a session. So, what we receive in terms from what the governor recommended is for the next five years, so, being always building two-year cycles, in terms of how much they're going to increase or decrease the funding formula allows. As I kind of, for you guys, we received a memo by, about, by, what would be, education, Commissioner, thank you, telling us that, right now, education is at a headlock, so right now, we're in that special position, we're doing twelve education bill, and what's in, in the budget is, first year, they've increased the four point one one percent, second year by three point five. However, we tell, you know, the assumption that we're building the budget is based on this. If anything changes, and like we are, we recommend the provision during the fall, but ensuring that there's, that all the factors, that we have, this can be, but if we continue, like you guys, right? So, we get student accounting, we look at everything that's happening down at the capital, we look at the funding formula, and then we plug in all, all the formulas, and then we get the revenue, we all get into the revenue, we'll get, we are projected to receive close to two point one, eight point one million dollars in, in A, from the student, we're going for about thirty seven, forty seven percent of the revenue, in addition to one point six million dollars in local taxes, that goes, goes our general fund for education, is everything in education. And again, remember that, in education, we have up to seven different types of fundamentals that are covered, we would like, and we'll give all our information to you guys even more. What I do wanna focus on is the great work that we've done, and I know that it's been the last couple of months. But if you look at the last year's proposed budget, there were four, about four hundred and, four hundred and seventy schools, and charter schools, the entire state, of which we overall ranked three hundred and sixty eight. Right? When I was putting the budget together, I pulled up the latest data, and now we have five hundred and thirteen school districts and charter schools in the entire state of Minnesota, of which we ranked now two hundred and sixty seven. And we're right in the middle of the, that is a very, very good spot to be in. How do we rank in terms of per pupil, local A, the local revenue, we rank sixty four, and you see that we get three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars per pupil from property taxes, which is the state average of three thousand, four hundred and forty-five. In terms of state A, we are four hundred and forty-eight, so we get nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars per student, versus the state average of ten thousand. For federal, we are two hundred and fifty-four, we receive eight hundred and nineteen dollars per student, which is nine hundred and five dollars, and overall, we rank two hundred and sixty-seven, all the way that we're from the three categories. So, today, we get fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-four people, which is the state average of fifteen thousand dollars. That is very, it's a steady cash flow, and we're sure that we can get our kids through that period. Again, we jump a hundred spots in one year. That is really good, so, awesome job all the way around. Here's just a breakdown in terms of general expenses. Here is how much we spend out of our operating budget, lumber, benefits, services, supplies, improvements, and then from there, then you can take a look at, see why we spend, in terms of administration, regular education, educational, just kind of give you guys, yeah, the powers to provide more statistics regarding our expenditures, but this is the kind of yeah, how we spend on that. Fund balance, right? I kind of give you guys, Greg and Sebastian, this first, work on balance, that we might eventually see a government shutdown. If it would have been, if this would have happened two years ago, we would have been in serious trouble. Not anymore, they shut down, I'm not concerned. We got spirit, we're here, don't be concerned, we have plenty of reserves, we get the, so, our policy says that we need to resummarize between ten to thirteen percent. Between ten to thirteen percent, in terms of reserves, I project that at the end of June thirtieth, and at fiscal year end, we're gonna end at ninety point six, or a high, which is really good to do. What's helping us to increase that, that reserves, is all of the consolidating and restructuring of the issues that we've been doing, in addition to the federal fund that we're receiving through the program. We're really looking on how we should do this, this, I always preach to you guys, that getting to this point, it's not hard, it's maintenance. So, I, as long as I'm in this year, I will never stop improving the district, this, this is a very relevant balance, on the fund balance we have, versus how we invest in our schools. You guys are starting to see that already. It's difficult to have a fund balance, but we're now looking into expanding program, and it's making it better, with the, every basket, and that is the job of. Again, remember this side, that that challenge is, and that goes into our public projection, which I'm trying to do about a plan man. So, again, going into fiscal year twenty-two, which we're probably doing. So again, going into fiscal year twenty two, which was probably twice of twenty twenty one. And we're seeing a period of twenty twenty two. I'm projecting that we're gonna start the fund balance, the general fund balance at one point eight million dollars. We're projected to receive ten million dollars. We're gonna spend, we're gonna budget ten point five, in which we're gonna end fund balance at two million. We don't maintain the current of our fund balance. Here is just a budget projection in terms of, of graduation, rap, our fund balance. So this is a million, and I scroll back to two thousand and five. I graduated in two thousand and seven. And the reason why I would break the government budget, I was in a logicist class. I graduated with a philosophy. Goodbye, you can see that students are going to be able to come to the town. And we can see the fund balance activity as well. This is where we go and come into. Which is here. The government wouldn't shut down in twenty nineteen, and we were at two percent fund balance. We were then sorry. Today, we're here at one point eight seventeen percent. We are prepared to do that in two thousand and five, then next year. You can see that trend moving in the right direction. That's my, that's my vision and that's my hope. You see that trend where we are. Questions regarding the budget proposed to you guys? Any questions that you guys have any other thoughts? My apology that I'm not going to debate to the other ones. And the reason for it is that the more people are involved, the higher school. More than that, if there's any question about. If you have any questions?
I just sort of think that education, they have a home department. Is it not something that can be desired for elementary school, is it outstanding or how does that work?
There's a very, very. Steep line. We have tried to like to, however, we can not. There's many studies of school districts who have that many trouble or many required requirements. So it was kind of a, in this weird, in this weird, probably sort of that. We need to get money, we need to find a way, for project, you know, so it's, it's really the wrong. But we can now kind of buy some of the new orders. We can see it's, it's, it's based on participation in a lot of that. That's the state average for fund balance. State average, the fund balance is just twenty and thirty percent. Greg, did I say nineteen percent? Yep, yep, we're projecting. And we could do twenty one and two. And again, that is many assumptions that I put in the budget. New assumption is based on first education. But this is a review video that I'm going to do for our certified staff and all of our other part of the initiative. It will depend that help us, we can do the cost of benefits we went on. This is something we're going to do. Where is this? Get from these areas. Again, the assumptions that I put in here is that long percent that is applied. There is other, other factors in there. In terms of the amount of students that we need to pay for, so you got to take them. Ask that motion back November when we started the open budget. We always leave about a ten to fifteen student gap for fluctuation of students. Remember that at the end of the year, the big pieces only number of hours that the student lost after the shift. The rest of attendance comes into play, all the gates are on the building, and many other things. Greg, did you have a question?
No question.
So we get to that motion. Anyway, I wanted to approve the proposed budget. Okay, thanks. Okay, let's get away with the elementary part, which we have a meeting this evening. So we'll start with the elementary moment today and school year at four hundred and thirty two. Start out the school year at four hundred and thirty three students. Tonight, the admin is going to. Want you to approve the retirement of Ms. Soss as the elementary secretary position. And then we would open this up, or we would interview actually, open up, we start interviewing here in the school. Activities, Mia Stewart, Emma Sutter, qualified for. Section eight, the way girls go section tournament. Noah Piga, we finished forty eighth at the state tournament. Tatiana Wiley won the four hundred meter dash, long jump with section eight. And then finished at state meet, finished eighth in the four hundred and thirteen in the long jump. The girls four by four relay team finished sixth at the state tournament. They were runner up at the section meet. And that consisted of Tori Stephenson, Hannah Stephenson, Clay Paulson, and Tatiana Wiley. The boys four by two, they're relay, finished tenth at the state tournament. And following in front of the pair Johnson, Sebastian Seteno, country rose, and this is Reyna. So congratulations to those in the red light. Onto the high school. Report, movement. We ended with four hundred and ten students at the end of the school year, we started off the school year with four hundred and nineteen. Summer school is going on, we have one week left of summer school. Focused on credit recovery, getting kids caught out. That's our goal here in the summers, we've been, we've been back in the fall and. A lot of summer activities going on, we got speed and strength going on for all students, grade seven to twelve, that's in the morning, we run that. From three AM to ten AM. A lot of different activities, summer rec activities going on, so a lot of kids are outside or inside moving, which is great. Especially coming out of that pandemic. Right now, there's no requirements with masks, that's nice. Watched it, and with that in circles. Special session, Mr. Martinez talked about that, we're in here about the funding. Marketing, our great school, we are going to, right now, we have a team together, put together, that's working. I'm probably gonna market our school here this summer before the school year starts. So right now, we're in planning stages. We're hoping to send information out, I'm sure, about our elementary, including preschool. Early childhood, kindergarten, all the way to fourth grade. Talking about academics, athletics, arts, all those items. And right now, our marketing team is, we're sure together, trying to make it into a heart hole. And they go to every resident in the district. And we're looking at area. So that's what we're working on right now. To get the visions out there, so. Green rocks at the high school. That summer school, we talked about that, we're planning for next year. And we got staff development that we're gonna start working on here. Next year, we're looking at August opportunities to offer staff. So we're planning to do that. New teacher workshop is August twenty fourth through twenty sixth, requires new staff. Just reminded, we do have a mentorship program, I started last year, so that's gonna be great to have in place again. Staff workshop will be August thirtieth through September second. And the first day of school is September seventh, and twenty one will. All leaders, so. A few agenda items, just going to approve the consent and duty items. Summer rec workers, we will hire a few more summer rec workers. Different activities going on. Hire summer employee worker, we had done that, we were missing one position at elementary. And hire club vice staff, we need to have. The approving the likes country popular membership rule, that's a big part of, very helpful, use them a lot. And that's an annual rule. Approve the Iowa, that is the person who's in charge of making sure that forms are completed. Getting the information, signing people up, and that would be myself and Ms. Everton. And both of us will do that, so that's an annual thing that we do. Approve membership rule, MRA, MRA, MRA's been great, I've been in past year, I've attended many meetings. Proved them, very informational, so. Next one is, I'm ready to bring in MSN, that's for street teachers. I'll work with them, and we encourage you to approve that. And some business items, we talked about the retirement of Lil Soss. That's effective in October, she would start out the school year by training in the new person, which we can date. To have a new guy, so we want to thank her for her years of service. I don't know if she misses two days of school, so she's been very good, very productive at the elementary school. And she can also be very appreciative of the quality. One next item, business item is approve girls custom teaching coach. Currently, right now, we have one head coach, Mr. Marsh, and then we have one assistant. What we are encouraging for it to do is approve this coach. So then we have one voice, custom teacher, and one girls. That have, head boys, no head girls, we have boys. And then we'll go to the head girls. Our goals to build numbers in that custom program. Next item is the school board meetings bundle, we include that in the package. Right now, we have all the regular school board meetings on there. Have work sessions as a unit. That's one change that we have under, we want to change that, our demand, we can do that, having a group. Or even go off the time that we have, or it's just any work session. And then the resolution to membership, the state head school labels, annual renewal that we do every year. So those are some of the agenda items, or all the agenda items that. Between myself and Rudy, to cover the people who join the group. Last item I'd like to talk to, Mrs. Seebles with us tonight, to talk about graduation recognition. We might be supposed to be at least part of one graduation, if we have unrecognized students. Speaking a little bit, and what we definitely present to you. So all of us, Mrs. Seebles, share what we'd like to do with our phone. Mrs. Seebles?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right, I would just like to take a minute of your time or more to talk about how we recognize students at graduation. Currently at graduation, we recognize our top two or three students, the Val Victorian and the Salutatorian. Our top ten percent and all students graduating with a cumulative GPA of three point oh or higher. The Val and Sal receive awards during the ceremony and so do the top ten percent. And then the way we recognize students with a three point or higher is by wearing the gold cords. And then an asterisk in the program. I would like to propose that for the next school year moving forward, that we look at a cum laude recognition system. Cum laude would mean with honor or distinction. Magna cum laude with great honor or great distinction. Summa cum laude with highest honor or greatest distinction. We, I've looked at what other schools and districts do and you can kind of set your own parameters on what GPA requirement we would have. So I'm proposing that for cum laude, we would have a three point oh to a three point four nine nine GPA. Magna cum laude would be three point five to three point seven four nine. And then a summa cum laude with, that would be the highest honor, would be three point seven five to a four point oh GPA. Why change and the benefits of this system? I think that this is a way we could recognize academic accomplishments of students on a broader spectrum. Especially those students who have really exceeded academically, so it kind of tiers them. We're still recognizing all above a three point oh, but we have two levels that are a little bit higher within that. It's also widely used in colleges and universities, so it's familiar. If they're applying to scholarships or admissions, this is something that they can put on their application. I think it also encourages students to strive for high academic achievements. So there's something to aim for. And it also eliminates fractional differences in GPA that determine class rank and the top ten percent. I've noticed in the last, well, especially in the last year, if we're only recognizing the top ten percent, there's some students that might get left out of that, even though they've had some really, really high academic accomplishments. So I'd like to be able to recognize all that have gotten to that level. As far as graduation goes and how we would recognize them, right now, we do one asterisk for above a three point oh. So I was thinking we could add two for the magna and three for the summa to kind of distinguish. We would still do the gold cords for anybody at a three point oh or higher. And then the blue and, blue and gold cords for the Minnesota Honor Society. And then during the ceremony, right now, when we recognize the top ten percent, I was thinking we could recognize everyone that has graduated summa cum laude with, with a medal, like a gold medal. Another way to recognize students would be to put stickers on their diploma, so a color or their type of recognition based on their laude level, so that they would have that for, forever. So that, you know, it's not in our handbook right now. This particular topic, but I, it is something that would probably have to be approved by a school board. Since our, our handbook has to be approved by the school board. So I wanted to just propose it tonight and kind of start a discussion about it throughout the summer, so that maybe we could move forward for next school year.
So just kind of clear something off for everyone. So one school, in one school year, a student with three point eight might not be the top ten percent. Okay, I said three point eight, so however, the year before, somebody with three point seven one wasn't the top ten percent. We're trying to be consistent, so everyone, every year. Good. Continue for a GPA of, of what I really want. I got some stuff.
Do you study students because?
Yes, I think that's worked very well, and I think it feels like that. Y'all, it's their graduation, it's motion.
Does anybody have any questions?
Looks like we're good.
Yeah, well, thank you. I, I don't know if anything can be done tonight, but maybe moving forward this summer, we could get something official.
Did we just approve it now? School manual? Yeah, we have that one. I think what we're going to do, our goals to bring in the thing. So now, to July, the time to make changes, or have a little attempt. I guess you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, anything else? Okay, thank you, all right. We'll move on, item seven, consent items. Confirm board eighty minutes, May seventeenth, regular and May thirteenth special. Item B, financial claims, may bills. Item C, treasury report. Item B, accept donations for the celebration of culture in Minnesota, twenty dollars. To the Dylan Scholarship Fund, the Dylan family, one hundred and fifty dollars. The PR Memorial Scholarship, Tom Hanson, fifty, sixty dollars. Memory of Scott King, memory of Thomas Scholzger, and the memory of that person. Personnel, hire summer rec workers. Ryan, the member that you have pronounced that, uh, please. How do you pronounce the first name? Lee, Lee, Para? Okay, Para, Para, okay. And severe, Para. Vellio Fernandez, Melissa Frankel. Dar Ibrahim. And Ibra, Abi Roman, Abi Roman, Izzy. And. Sakaria, Sakaria Izzy, Elizabeth Mo, Mohammed Mohammed. Isaac Moreno, Greta, Nordgren, Nordgren, Tia Olson, Bowie Paulson. Oscar, Pedrosa, John Peter. Hire summer custodial worker, and we get Alex Atley. Hire club vice staff, Babe Martin, Samantha Johnson. Ashana Springer Fisher, and Sarah Willis. Item F, approve light company service cooperative membership renewal, annual renewal for twenty twenty-one to twenty-two. Item G, approve MOU with superintendent contract. Item H, approve MOU with finance director contract. Item I, approve insurance renewal for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two with AMC Insurance. Item J, approve identified official with authority designation for MBE Superintendent Brian Horp and Emily Everton backup. K, approve membership renewal with M R A. And L, approve memorandum of agreement with MSU. So I will entertain a motion for the consent items. Motion by Ann, we have a second? Any discussion on the consent items? There is no discussion on the consent items, although in favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call again, Greg?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Molly? Brenda? Brenda Spains, and I'm an aye. A motion carries. On the business items, item eight, approve the retirement of Lois Os. Effective October twenty twenty-one, and I will read the letter. I had it pulled up. Date of May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, administration of board members. It's such a blessing to work for the Calhoun Rapids School District, now seeing time to pass the baton on. My intentions are to start the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and then retire October fifteenth. Like you know, that the office has been a friendly and caring place to work in that trade, that whoever is working for Lois Os. Will enjoy it as much as I now, grateful to have been part of this team, Lois Os. Lois? We have a motion to approve Lois Os' retirement. Motion by Brenda, we have a second? Second by Molly? Any discussion? There is discussion, although it's favor of approving her retirement, signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call, Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Molly? Brenda? And I'm an aye. It's approved. Item B, approve girls cross-country head coach. We have a motion to approve the position. Motion by Molly? Second by Brenda? Any discussion on the girls cross-country coach? Head, boys, head, girls. Here is no more discussion, although it's a favor of approving the girls cross-country coach, signify by saying aye, I'll do a roll call, Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Molly? I'm an aye. Item C is going to be rescind the abatement upon resolution. So we have to rescind that resolution? So I will entertain a motion to uh to the resolution. And I will second. And I will read the resolution. School district independent, independent school is five forty-eight, Pelican Rapids, school board. Regular meeting held on June twenty-first at six P M, district offices. Uh resolution rescinding resolution, yeah, resolution rescinding resolution relating to the proposed property tax abatement for your parking lot reconstruction project. There it is. To be resolved by the school board of the independent school district five forty-eight, Minnesota. That by resolution duly adopted on May seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, entitled Resolution Relating to Proposed Property Tax Abatement for Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. In parentheses, the May seventeen, twenty twenty-one resolution. This board is scheduled, a public hearing to be held on the proposed property tax abatement with respect to the proposed parking lot reconstruction project. To subsequently determine the proposed property tax abatement, proposed property parking lot reconstruction project will not proceed at this time in order for the scope of the project to reevaluate the uncertainty back before this board. If it might determine that the board rescinds the base of twenty twenty-one resolution and all respects. And this is a resolution, Greg, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Anna? So that is going to rescind. Next item off will be to approve the payment of geotechnical and engineering costs for the parking lot uh project. We have a motion to approve payment to Terracotta. Second. Motion by Ann, second by Molly. Any discussion on that? There is no discussion, all of the proof. Although in favor of approving the payment for engineering costs, signify by saying aye. Greg, do you resolve?
Aye.
Anna?
Yes.
Molly? Brenda? I'm an aye. So that passes. Item A, approve the two thousand twenty, two thousand, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school board meetings together. That was sent out to us. We have a motion by Ann, second by Brenda, to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school board meeting schedule. Any discussion, looking through it? Any discussion?
Y'all, sir.
We're thinking, we, the session we do is running. And I'm not always doing that for me.
Is that, mm-hmm, with that work schedule, if we have them, is it useful to like that, cancel them?
Well, some of the, well, some of the hard being, uh, we can't, you know, so purposely give you a, give that time, we're. To do that, we send all dates out. He's here to stay.
For a while, like the thirty Wednesday of the, something like that?
Use Wednesdays and use Mondays.
I think generally if they kept a certain date, then if we needed to cancel it, we'd do it. Is that easier for everybody just to pile on how you're, then? You know, either we cancel it, or you'd rather do it flexibly.
Well, I can help for you when, I suppose, you, you know, it's sort of like, I think it would be easier. And Brittany would probably agree as well, but you know, I think it's easier for us to have a plan and cancel it versus try to use like this, you try to do that.
Yes. You want to do it every, every plan, you want it every month, and every other month, so.
The way things are right now, and we don't know what's going on with legislation, I would say at least. Unfortunately, for summer, I would at least say that we should probably have a plan, even though, I'd say you'd probably not want them. But we don't know what's going to happen. Um, this is the schedule for the regular meetings that we're approving too.
Correct, yeah. So the motion failed. We don't have to. Not the one. Have a work session for that, right? Yeah. Mondays or Wednesdays, with Doug?
We can still remember.
Greg, you have any thoughts on the work sessions? We can discuss them next month.
I'm good with anything.
So it appears we'll approve the regular meetings dates tonight, and then uh we'll talk about work sessions next month. So did we get a, yep, we had a motion. It's my answer, Brenda, any more discussion? There is no more discussion, all of the favor.
Right, Anna? Sir, I quit.
Aye. Greg, aye? Did I hear an aye, Greg?
Aye.
Anna? Molly? Brenda? And I'm an aye. Item F, approve the twenty twenty-one, two resolution for membership. This is what a state high school. By Brenda? Second? Second by Molly? Any discussion on the resolution for membership? Do we have to do this as a resolution too? All right. So this is the resolution, so I will uh read here. Twenty twenty-one resolution for membership to the Minnesota State High School League. Resolved that the governing board of school district five forty-eight, county of Atlantic State in Minnesota, delegates of control, supervision, and regulation of the scholastic athletic and financial events referred to the Minnesota Statute section. One twenty-eight C point zero one, the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the state. By Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that the high schools listed below which would be Calhoun Rapids High Schools. Is authorized by the governing board of state school district or school to renew its membership to the state high school league and participate in approved inters- interschool activities sponsored by state league and its various subdivisions. Further resolved that this governing board hereby adopts by the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of state league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of league's official handbook. Unfiled at the office of district board work, the league website. As a minimum standard of governing participation, it sets league-sponsored activities and helps the administration responsibility for determining stuff, student eligibility, supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representative identified in the governing board. Signing of the government, membership to terms, this governing board has been. Activity programs assist school communities, community, and communicate in shared common language. And uh above resolution was adopted, so the member of school must de- must develop and publicize administrative procedures to address eligibility suspension where they have reported student conduct violations of student activity program at schools. This above resolution was adopted by the governing board of the school district, reported by official heads of board nearby. So this is the resolutions, so Greg, how do you resolve?
I just muted him, sorry.
Aye.
Ann?
Yeah.
Molly? Brenda? I mean, yes. Resolution carries. Item D, approve the twenty twenty-one meal benefit application plan. Discuss by two martins. We have a motion?
We have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two, that is the topic that we, we. We can divide these guys with an active password.
Second by Brenda, so a motion by Ann, second by Brenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, although in favor of approving the meal benefit application plan, signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call again. Greg?
Aye.
Molly?
Molly? Brenda? Aye. And I'm an aye. Motion carries. Next item up will be approved of 2021 and 22 proposed budget. Presented by Mr. Martinez. We need to save by certain duty now or. So I'll entertain a motion for the budget. Motion by Ann. All second. Any discussion on the budget? Hearing no discussion, although in favor of approving the proposed budget, signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call again. Greg?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Molly? Brenda? And I'm an aye. Budget carries. Okay, number nine, upcoming meetings. We have a regular meeting, July 19th, 2021. This will be in the boardroom. So we're going to be moving the venue here. And then we have MSBA Virtual Summer Seminar, August 5th, 2021. If anybody's interested. Hold up. Guessing we'll be giving some information maybe later. Pretty quick. Probably didn't want to do it. I received. All have to do. Regular meeting, August 16th, 2021, in the boardroom. And now we're going to go into the closed session, closed meeting for the purpose of superintendent evaluation.
Good.
I got to read the notes. And citing statute, Minnesota Statutes 13, he is David (point 05), subdivision 3, privacy paid. Meetings having data classified as not public. And a public body may close a meeting to evaluate the performance of an individual who is subject to its authority. The public body shall identify the individual at the evaluation required for proposing the meeting. At its next open meeting, the public body shall summarize its conclusions regarding the evaluation. Meeting must be open at the request of the individual who is the subject of the meeting. This would be for the purpose of evaluation for superintendent Brian Horp. So I will entertain a motion to go into a closed meeting. Motion by Ann. Second by Brenda. Any discussion? Discussion, although in favor of approving of going into a closed meeting, signify by saying aye. Greg?
Aye.
Anne? Molly? Brenda? I'm an aye. Okay, we're going to go into a closed meeting. We'll be recording.
Okay, we're back in. It is 8:30. We just completed the evaluation phase and the statement will be in the next meeting. On the summary of the evaluation. So now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Molly makes motion to adjourn.
Second. Go ahead, Brenda.
We have second by Brenda. Any discussion on adjourn? Appreciate everybody's help tonight. This will be a roll call. Hearing no more discussion. Greg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Molly? Brenda? And I'm an aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.